Do you like the changes that we've made to Hennepin Avenue? Not excited about this topic.
Well, it's because it's like very multifaceted. I hear a lot from voters, okay?
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge Neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
John, check out this mug. Very Wedge Live appropriate for the, for the listeners. It says Cat Mom. And I think it's kind of relevant because when I talk with voters in Ward Seven, they're like, I just know you as like the cat lady or the topless lady. And then, you know, they're like, oh, but then when I peel back the layers, like there's something of substance there.
Are they saying cats and toplessness are not substantive?
I know, right? Yeah, exactly. This is, this is really important stuff.
You know, I wasn't, I didn't think I was gonna have time to do Ward Seven before the caucuses. I still don't know if this episode is gonna air ahead of time.
Fair enough. There are a lot of us, right?
What is it up to? Four?
Four is what I've heard. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know of anyone else who's considering it, so.
I can't tell if Corey Vest is running for real or if it's a gag. Is, is there a website there?
I have looked for the website and have not found it. And I wish there was one because, you know, I consider Corey a friend. And so I'd honestly like happily donate to his campaign. Corey, if you're listening, I donate.
Don't, don't donate to your opponents. That's not, that's not how you do it, Paula. No.
I don't know. I mean, anyway, I, I, well, um, so I haven't seen the website and I haven't seen a donate button.
Well, I'm using the fact that there is no website allegedly as a reason not to talk to a fourth, uh, Ward Seven candidate. Funny story, it is probably too long to include at the beginning of the episode. I don't know which part of this I'm gonna include. But I ran into Elizabeth Schaefer outside the Uptown Theater after the Uptown Crime Meeting.
Yeah.
And so I ju- I just see a person in a bike helmet. And so I, I guess I was smiling. I don't know. But then she smiled back at me. I think I smile at a lot of people lately and I don't realize I'm doing it and they think I'm friendly. So they engage with me. Don't make that mistake, everyone. Just because I'm smiling, it's not about you. I didn't even see you. So I engage with her, uh, did not realizing this is Elizabeth Schaefer, the Park Commissioner or-
Yeah, she's your Park Commissioner.
Or a council candidate?
Yeah.
I should recognize her. And then she's like, hi, John. I'm like, I run through my mind, who is this person who obviously knows me? It's like, oh, man, this is Elizabeth Schaefer. I've said some things about her. But I did, I did invite her on the podcast and she said she would consider it. I don't think it's gonna happen. And I don't blame her.
I mean, you know, it's an intimidating format and not, that's, it's not you, but it's just, you know, it's a, it's a long format and I doing this process now, running, gives me a lot more empathy for folks who are doing it because, you know, trying to make sense of so many things in lots of words and it's all gonna be, you know, for the consumer to listen to. I, I get it.
The good part about it is I don't, someone could do a transcript if they wanted to. I don't put out transcripts and I don't really clip things that are unflattering to people. Like unless someone takes the time to listen to everything in its full context, there is no danger. And if you hear it in context, who gets mad after listening to a podcast, really? Unless they're hate listening. I don't know. There's nothing intimidating about this.
I'm just thinking about like the Joe Rogan podcast and
Right, right.
How many times I personally have gotten angry after listening to that one.
You shouldn't listen, Paula. You shouldn't listen to that.
But you just said that you like hate listening.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
My message to everyone, if I include this, uh, convert long intro into the episode is that don't be intimidated. Uh, I'm just giving people like room to run. Like I really do want to learn what people are about.
It's great. It's great. And I, I fully, like, I think it's so great that you offer that space because I, I know that like all the, I'm just so grateful for all the volunteers in this process who, you know, have stepped up to interview the candidates who, who do this kind of work because, you know, you're not getting paid for it. So it's really, I'm really grateful.
People might, so, so this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest is Ward Seven City Council Candidate Paula Chesley. Welcome.
Hi, friends.
I was reluctant to, hesitant to even have this conversation. We've been friends. You've been a supportive and good friend to me. We, and you've also been a co-host of various, uh, episodes of this podcast. So people may associate you with me.
And they do.
But, but we don't agree. That doesn't mean I'm here to support Paula Chesley. Disclaimer at the beginning. Uh, we are going, we disagree on some things. We have not even as friends talked about politics that much. So.
Yeah. And you know, I, I just, yeah, I thank you for naming that. And I, I think it's really important over the course of these conversations. Like if I'm, if I'm elected, I'm gonna be representing a whole ward and that's a lot of different interests. And so it really matters for me to be able to talk with people who don't necessarily have the same viewpoints as me and to find out. You know, maybe to take a step back, like what I see a lot going on is that, you know, people do care about the same things. Maybe in different order, uh, and maybe just having different strategies for getting there. And so I think it's really important to take a step back and to focus on that common goal. As well as to think like, how can we do this strategy and how can we decide on the strategies that we take to get there? And so, you know, you as, as a friend and as a, um, and as someone who I might not agree with, I uh, just want to engage with you and just, you know, hear your perspective. Um, you're really knowledgeable about some things that I don't know as much about. And so, um, yeah, I just, I'm here to listen and also to share what my beliefs are, how I got to those beliefs. And to share a vision for Ward Seven and the City Council.
Well, how dare you say you disagree with me? I, I disagree with you. You can't disagree with me.
Okay, okay. It's not transitive.
So let's take the temperature of Ward Seven. I asked this, I've been asking this to all the candidates. What are the top three issues you're hearing from people as you campaign?
Yeah. So I would say public safety is very high up there. And then economic development. You know, Ward Seven encompasses a good chunk of Uptown and also Loring Park. And a really good chunk of downtown where there are a lot of commercial office buildings. And so people are really wanting to see, um, development of those areas for walkability, like having things to walk to. And then also affordable housing and homelessness I'm hearing about a lot as well. And I'm happy to share some stories about, about those.
We will get into that. Uh, what is, so I think everyone who is very political thinks about the issue that drives them, what, what they are motivated in this world to get done. And it's not necessarily like a laundry list of campaign, campaign platform positions. It's like, what, what is the thing that drives you? What motivates?
That's driving me to run for City Council.
Yeah, like I know what, what drives me. It's like, it is transportation and housing. It is. So people have, can afford to live in the city and they can live in the city without having to drive everywhere. That's like, that's my, my core. The core of me is that. So like, what, what is your core?
Um, I would say having a, a safe, livable city that people can walk to and where people feel that there is care for others and that there are interesting things to do in their area. And that we have, uh, I mean, I'm not getting into this for like property taxes, you know, but like just making sure that people want to come to Minneapolis, that Minneapolis can be a fun place for people to live. An affordable place for people to live. Um, and so those are some of the things that drive me.
Give me the argument against the incumbent. She's been in office for a little over a year. After 26 years of Lisa Goodman. There's been a bit of a, I think there is a portion of Ward Seven that is just desperate to go back to Goodman style leadership. But, but like, give me the argument against why after a year, we need to move beyond Katie Cashman.
Yeah. So I do just want to acknowledge, you know, like you said, that, um, she, Katie Cashman has been in office now for just over a year, I mean, like a year and a quarter. And I think that this job is a tough one. And I think there's a learning curve to it. So I think that we need to give grace to people when, when they are in that position. Um, I also have worked, uh, quite a bit with Katie Cashman. I've been on the East Isles Neighborhood Association Board. Concerned resident, you know, block captain, speaking up for folks in my area. Uh, who maybe don't know all of the levers to push or pull. And then, you know, so just reaching out on behalf of others. And just kind of getting the sense that the priorities that really matter to folks, um, like safety and economic revitalization of Uptown, Downtown, Loring Park, that those are not the top priorities for Katie Cashman. responsiveness has been really hit or miss. You know, I'm, I'm hearing that from folks quite a bit, like never returning an email. Having emails returned three to four months late. And I think that people do miss that about Lisa Goodman because whether or not you agreed with her, she got back to you really promptly and people felt heard and seen. And that really matters at this really local level of government. Um, and then I think that there, you know, definitely I, I would have taken some votes differently. Um, another thing that I hear about, uh, the incumbent is that she represented herself. This is what people feel is that she represented herself differently campaigning than she's been in office. And so that is something that people struggle with.
So get into that. Like what, what did she say in the campaign? How did she present herself in the campaign that has turned out to be different?
Yeah. Um, I think the, what I'm hearing from folks quite a bit is that she ran as more of a moderate, um, like a Lisa Goodman two point O. And that is not what we're seeing.
Is there like a specific policy thing?
Um, so I, we are still doing that research. I think some folks have said, like, presenting herself as like very friendly to business, not wanting to talk about her perspectives on, um, Israel Gaza, uh, in the campaign. I would say also focusing, like saying that, um, safety is a top priority, saying that focusing on unhoused homelessness is going to be a top priority. And then, um, not really seeing any movement on those issues. So I mean, we are seeing, uh, movement on safety. I want to be clear about that. But not seeing the engagement from our council member that we'd like to see about that.
So I'm, I went through the public safety section on your website and you're using the phrase fully funded, fully staffed and with regard to MPD. Would you disagree that that's the current council members' position too? She voted for the bigger budget, voted for the historic raises. MPD's budget has grown by 50 million since 2022, much faster than other, uh, parts of the city government. So I feel like we were having this debate in the city another election year where a lot of candidates are saying, fund the police, fund the police, fund the police. And I'm thinking, MPD has never not been fully funded. Why use those phrases? Are you implying that like Cashman, that's not her position?
So yeah, Katie Cashman did vote for those raises and I think that was a good vote. I also think that if safety is going to be your top priority, that that is just a starting point. So for example, some of the things that I'd like to do regarding, um, police funding and getting our recruitment numbers back up to pre-pandemic levels, which is what I'd like to see. Uh, I, so for example, Daniel Hernandez, who's the owner of Colonial Market, has little stations at his stores where people can go to learn about if they're interested in being a police officer, what that might look like. And so one of the things that I'd like to do as a Ward Seven Council Member is to partner with businesses and individuals who are interested in helping to grow our force in a faster rate. That's something I'd really like to see. Um, and I, to your point about the budget for MPD growing at a faster rate than the rest of MPD budget, I think I saw on your Twitter, something like the rest of Minneapolis budget from like 2020 to now has grown 18%. And then, uh, the MPD budget has grown 27%. Is that right?
Sounds right, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, we have that 18% and that accounts for things like inflation, those historic raises. But we are also in the middle of a consent decree and consent decrees are not cheap. Um, and so I would hope that everyone wants the consent decree. I personally think that police reform is super important. And especially if I'm gonna, you know, say that I want more police officers, which I do. I think we need to be really serious about police reform. Uh, and part of that is gonna be expensive. And I know that, uh, Chief O'Hara has said that a consent decree is like the opposite of defund the police. So, so I think that's where those additional funds for MPD are coming from.
What do you make of the dynamic at City Hall right now? Council members are saying that the mayor doesn't include them in the process on big decisions, things come up for a vote when they're fully baked. It becomes a showdown. Like I, I have the impression the mayor enjoys these showdowns because politically running against the council is, uh, you know, that's good for him to have a boogeyman to, to run against. He's, I, I happen to be a person who doesn't think he's done a great job. So what do you make of that dynamic? Do you think you could work with this mayor? Would you be willing to push this mayor if he is reelected? Are you supporting the mayor? There's so many questions in there.
Okay. Uh, first question was, what do I think of the dynamic? As an outsider, I think it's honestly really hard to, I mean, to, to say, right? Because we've got council members kind of saying one thing. And, and then, um, the mayor and some other council members are saying something else. Um, I, I don't want to have any assumptions about that. I, I want to come in and do the work for Ward Seven and for the city. And I think that I can work with anyone. Um, I, you know, want to see the humanity in everyone's for sure. Like things are gonna get challenging at times. But one of the things that I think could be helpful and that maybe that I don't see this city council and this mayor doing so much are taking a step back and just like having some light moments or some fun together. And that's something that I'd really like to bring to this.
Are you suggesting a City Hall retreat?
I mean, like, those are your words, but I have thought, like, I heard that Robin Wonsley was on your podcast saying that she likes Zumba. And I was like, I could totally do a Zumba class with Robin Wonsley. So, um, you know, or something, something fun like that. So that people can, um, just begin to see people as people again. And I think that that can really help with those dynamics. Uh, and then your second-
So let me make my case that Mayor Fry is the problem because I have been watching City Hall long enough that he has had this problem with successive councils. Like we had a big turnover in 2021. He, he would feud with Jeremy Schrader, you know, other council members. Lisa Bender was not a fan of how Mayor Fry operated. Now we have an entirely new set of council members who are having the same problems. I don't think the mayor's pro, I don't think the mayor works well with others. I really don't.
Okay. I, uh, I, you know, I, I will say that I have contacted him for some constituent issues, just some basic constituent issues. And he's always been responsive.
Oh, he will charm you. He charms people. He tried to charm me. Like he does the thing where he texts literally everyone and makes them his best friend. And, uh, shame on anybody for falling for it. Cause he's not your best friend. He is collecting people. That's how he operates. And, uh, I mean, it's good politics. Like he's very good at that part of politics, the one-on-one, collecting people, making them feel like they're the most special people in the world. I just think he's really bad at the job. But, uh, yeah. Did, did you want to say whether you're supporting him this year?
So in terms of support of the mayor candidate, of the mayoral candidates, um, I think it's pretty early. I may or may not at some point make a decision around that. Um, I, I do think that I can work well, I want to work well with whoever is elected. And to that point, I've been to almost, an event of almost all of the mayoral candidates. And, um, you know, just introducing myself, saying I'm Paula Chesley, you know, running for Ward Seven. And really wanting to, uh, have constructive dialogue with, with anyone who is elected.
Like I know that's an unfair question and no one in their right mind, no candidate in their right mind should answer it. I mean, a lot of progressives are answering it, but, uh,
Yeah, fair enough.
So many, so many of the criticisms that challengers are making this year against incumbents. I think to myself, well, that is mostly the mayor's job. A lot of that is the mayor's job. Like whether it's homelessness or police, I can't get those same candidates to say, I, I think we need a new mayor. Like I understand that that's a politically difficult, uh, question to answer, but I'm also thinking if the council member, one of 13 council members in the council isn't responsible for this, if they are so bad and need to be replaced. But I can't get you to say, and not you specifically, but can't get these candidates to say, we need to get, we need to move on from Mayor Fry. So it's a little weird.
I think it's because like I'm not running for mayor. I'm running for city council person. And like I have interacted obviously more with my city council member than the mayor. And that is the thing that has been frustrating me. Um, and I, so to your point about like things that are, you know, that people criticize the city council for, that are actually in the mayor's purview or vice versa. Um, I think the city council members have quite a, you know, a bit of say around things that can happen in their wards. And I think we saw that at the, um, Uptown Safety Meeting, right? Like, uh, folks advocating for safety ambassadors in their ward. We saw it with, um, all of a sudden, you know, Katie Cashman sent us, um, an email about violence interrupters in Uptown. And she said that she directed them where to go. And, um,
But she can't direct them where to go. I don't, are you sure she said that?
I, I will pull up the email.
Okay. Cause that seems like she wouldn't make that claim because she obviously can't.
I have asked them to, so this is, dear Uptown Ward Seven neighborhood leaders, I want to be sure that you and your neighbors are aware that starting tomorrow night, there will be a violence interrupter group working in Uptown called We Push For Peace. I have asked them to work along Hennepin Avenue between, uh, Lake Streets and 28th and in some of the side streets nearby.
So she asked them. The council can ask things of the mayor, but, uh, can't direct them. So I think one of, so back to the crime meeting. And so the council funded it and they're like, to the mayor, why haven't you implemented it? That was the council members line there. We funded this in the, the 2024 budget, didn't get implemented, still is not getting implemented. There are pilots coming. But, uh, they were like, we funded it, he implements.
Yeah. So if I can just take a step back for those safety ambassadors, so I do want to take a little bit of credit for them. Back in 2023, the city council was looking to focus on neighborhoods other than Uptown. And I sent an email to Lisa Goodman. She forwarded it along to Isha Chugtai saying like, why can't we have these in Uptown? Um, and then Aisha said, we will have them in Uptown. And so I don't know the impact to which my email. You know, that impacted that decision, but Lisa Goodman credits it with, um, perhaps having those safety ambassadors in Uptown. So at the time I was the, uh, Safety Chair for the East Isles Neighborhood Association. Um, so yeah, I mean, those were funded in, for the 2024 budget and it's 2025. And we, we don't have them, right? And that's frustrating and I can understand that. I mean, I think as we saw at the meeting, um, many folks are frustrated by that. Um, I think like for me, as someone running for city council, uh, I want to be focused on what I can do and not say like, well, we funded this, you know, please do it. Uh, or please, you know, where's, where's the problem and blaming, um, other folks or blaming staff. And I, you know, I certainly hear the frustration with the, um, slowness. But I also think that there are things that, that, uh, council members can do. Like if that's not working, if the safety ambassadors aren't working, then what else can I as a council member be doing to help promote safety in this area? And that's what I'd be thinking about. And that's what we've been lacking.
So what, what would that be? So the council funded a thing and the mayor didn't implement it.
Yeah.
And that kind of hit a dead end for now. Like what, what's the other thing that council members need to be following through on?
Um, so, you know, I guess, you know, one of the things that folks have been expressing in the Uptown Association, because this is just not happening, uh, is private security. Um, there is also, you know, the option of bringing violence interrupters. That does seem to be something that council has a little bit of purview over. I know that Katie Cashman has said like, I'm bringing violence interrupters or we are with Jamal Osmond, bringing violence interrupters into the 19th and Nicollet area. So that does seem to be something that council has, uh, purview over. So really working on that in the interim. Um, focusing on other sources of funding to be able to bring violence interrupters into this area. So just really like throwing the kitchen sink at the problem.
So another thing that came up with a crime meeting, which kind of amused me, kind of infuriated me was transportation resentment. Just people like, the lady who was like, no F-ing bump outs. And then the guy who's like railing against the bus. I've never seen a full bus. It's with these medians and these bike lanes and these bus lanes. It's like, uh, on one hand, I'm thinking, well, we must be on the right track and that all these people have grievances that aren't crime and, and like quality of life issues. They're just mad at bikes and buses. So I'm wondering like what-
Yeah, I love that interpretation.
Yeah. Cause, cause I went through the bad old 2010s where we fought for a lot of these changes and they were more controversial.
Yeah.
And these, these complaints were very common. This is like normal city politics, people just being deeply unhappy about the condition of the, the streets. But what, what kind of transportation council member would you be? Uh, do you like the changes that we've made to Hennepin Avenue? Not excited about this topic.
Well, it's because it's like very multifaceted. I hear a lot from voters, okay? So, uh, you know, some people are like, I like the bike lane. Some people say, I like the bike lanes, but I want them to be on side streets.
Where they're not needed. Let's, let's take that complaint. Side streets where they're not needed. The reason we put them on the busy main streets is because that's where people want to travel.
I'm just gonna put out there that I want the continuation of the Bryant Avenue bike lane into the Wedge. I would prefer that over bike lanes on Lindale. Um, first of all, for a continuity aspect.
Stay in your ward. Stay in your ward.
It's all one neighborhood and you know, I do go into Ward 10 and I do, you know, um, yeah, I do, I do go into other wards occasionally. So. Uh, anyway, so that's, that's one thing for Bryant and Lindale. Um, and then for the Hennepin Avenue redesign, I mean, I'm gonna use the bike lanes. Like I am a cyclist. People will see me cycling out and about all throughout Ward Seven. Uh, it's already begun. Um, I do think that like, I like the idea of bike lanes on like Humboldt or a side street, to be totally honest.
But are they necessary there?
I think that, I mean, are they necessary? You're, so you're saying on Hennepin, we want-
On Hennepin, no, nobody in their right mind should be in the street on a bike. And so the, the bike lane is necessary. On Humboldt, you could ride in the middle of the street on Humboldt with your little child. Like maybe I'm exaggerating a little, but like it's very safe. There's no danger there. On Hennepin, you'd have to be crazy to ride in the middle of the street on your bike. Like I feel like we're, people want bikes to like be off someplace else. I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me, this argument.
What do you think of the Bryant Avenue bike, like of the protected Bryant Avenue bike lane?
I think it's great.
Well, then Bryant is kind of like Humboldt. You know, it's mostly residential.
I mean, Bryant, pre-reconstruction, south of Lake was awful. Like there are paddles everywhere. It was wide. It was super fast. I don't think it was like Humboldt really.
So bike lane on Irving. I don't know if you can do that because Irving is an emergency vehicle street. But like Irving is, Irving gets a lot of fast traffic. And I think you were the one that posted on Twitter, all of the 20 is plenty signs on Irving. Is that right?
Yeah.
So like have a bike lane on Irving.
I think we would have, another thing is we would have the same debates about parking if you did it on Irving. If you ask people on Irving to give up their parking, they might be even more pissed because this is in front of their home, right?
Yeah. Well, possibly. Yeah. I mean, although how did that go with the folks on Bryant?
People were pissed and now everybody loves it. I just feel like a lot of these debates are in the moment. People hate it. People hate the idea of change. We're so scared. And then we build them and I was like, wow, this is a, the nice street. It's slower. It's safer. It's a place I want to hang out. Car noises aren't as loud.
Yeah, I will, you know, change is hard, right? Um, so I hear you on that front. And I am curious about what the Hennepin, I mean, this summer is gonna be very unfun for those of us in Ward Seven who experience the Hennepin Avenue construction, and that's gonna be a lot of us. Um, and, but afterward, I'm very curious to see what happens and how it rolls out. Um, I, I do think that it's important to have parking on Hennepin Avenue. Um, I, I do think that it's important to have parking on Hennepin Avenue. And I just want to say that this is not something that I, like I hear you with vehicle emissions causing climate change. Like I, that is real, right? And we as a city, a state, a country, right, like a, a world need to come to grips with that. And um, at the same time, I am concerned about the, the viability of our local businesses. Um, and if you, and let me just kind of explain how I got to this, which is that I go to the core power, several different sort of like very experiential ways that I came to this. I go to the core power yoga in uptown and over the last five years, I've noticed a notable decline in the amount of people that go to that uh particular studio. And I would see people that I used to see in uptown and now they're at the northeast studio. And I say like, hey, why don't you go to the uptown studio anymore? And so many people have told me it's because of the parking. Um, so I think when that happens and, and when businesses leave and there are notable amounts of businesses that have left due to parking and they say it, um, I think we need to believe them. Um, and I think that, you know, we, we need to find a balance for everyone in our city to be able to move around. Like I am childless and able bodied, so it's relatively easy for me to move around on a bike. And that's not necessarily the case for everyone. So I wanna, that's why like I really like the idea of bike lanes on side streets, for example, while still promoting this infrastructure that can be so valuable and also having parking. And I think for me, the idea is to like gently nudge people toward um, toward greener options of transportation. Um, and I also think that, you know, we, this is a different city than the last decade from twenty ten to twenty twenty. And so for me, that means that I really want to help make it easy for people to come to Minneapolis, to live in Minneapolis, um, and to, and to enjoy their lives here.
So thank you for entertaining and, and humoring my uh, my transportation conversation here because I'm having a more freewheeling conversation with you about this than I have with, with other people. And it always, this always ends up being the thing I want to talk about the most.
Yeah, I'm happy to engage, you know?
So one of the reasons, I don't list climate change as one of my like top four or five reasons to do this. This is about livability and what makes the neighborhood better, like a safer neighborhood, a more pleasant place to hang out. I think we're going to find that uptown, the wedge area, Ward ten, Ward seven are better off for these changes. Like change is hard. We, we've had a lot of other issues in the last, you know, five years that have maybe made uptown a, a place people avoid that are not related to transportation. So I feel, I feel like we're gonna come out of this in a good place on the other side. And uh, I will never believe a business owner assert things, who asserts things about parking. I'm never going to believe that what they say is true. I just can't do it. I have heard, I have heard too much bullshit from business owners about parking at public meetings that is just provably, according to the parking study, false. And so I can't take it seriously.
Okay, okay. I want to say a couple of things. First of all, can I, like another thing is if you go on Hennepin Avenue and if you look at the businesses that have closed in the places where they have little mini malls or they're zoned for large parking lots, um, those are, those businesses are still there. Whereas businesses that are on the street and just have on-street parking, those are the ones that have closed. Like if I did a correlation study there, I think it would be pretty significant. And so those, that's another reason why I think, okay. And then if you think about Lagos Tacos, again, crossing wards, like, right? Like Lagos Tacos cited one of the reasons why they're leaving as the construction.
Which I'm beginning until twenty twenty seven. They are so full of shit. Lagos Tacos, you are full of shit. That reconstruction is coming in twenty twenty seven.
But like, but they are still, it's still changed their mind, right?
Yeah, I, I'm not impressed by business owners making claims. Like I feel bad, like a reconstruction is gonna be a headache for you for the time that it's happening, but like we have to reconstruct streets.
Maybe one, a place where we can find common ground is finding more support for businesses um, at during these reconstruction times. And I know that that's something that our state representative Katie Jones is focusing on at the state level to be able to get those funds. And I, I think that we should have more of those um during construction periods. I think that there should be more support, like I'm talking with businesses and, and they're saying that they didn't really get a lot of support from the city or the county or um Met Council for some of these reconstruction projects and they'd really like to see that. Um, so that's, that's one thing. And then to your point about um, you're thinking that we're gonna come through this and it will be better. Uh, I, I hope so. I mean, I hope you're right, right? Like I, I think we all want the success of this area. Um, and so let's, you know, let's see what happens. And if it, if it is better, then that's great. And if not, then like s- um, places like Toronto are starting to redesign their streets. Uh, they have put in, um, they're, they're actually putting in more lanes of traffic after I think taking out parking or having bus only.
That's because their conservative premier made a law that said rip out these bike lanes that everybody likes and are good for business. Is that what you're referring to?
Did they, um, people were upset about the congestion, right?
Right, yeah. I mean, I, I want to, I want to give you the last word on this. So sorry for interrupting.
You're good. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a topic that's really passionate for you and I can appreciate that. Um, I think like, again, you know, I, I like transit. I like bikes. Um, and I think we need to accommodate everyone in the ward and in the city and while gently nudging them. And I think the key word there is gently. And I'm, I want to say that some of the redesigned projects that I have seen, I have, don't feel super gentle. Um, one of the things that I would like to see as we do those are um, service before infrastructure. So for example, the bus only lanes on Lindale Hennepin corridor going to downtown from uptown. And a lot of that is in Ward seven. Um, I would like to see increased bus service before we get those bus only lanes. Because now it just feels like there's a bus every twenty minutes and it's just creating congestion for other folks.
Whi- which, which location for the increased bus service?
Um, so those are the, the bus only lanes kind of going by the walker, you know, as we head into downtown from uptown and vice versa.
Are people complaining about those? Are those causing problems?
Yes.
So I know I said the final word, but Lagos Tacos, Lagos Tacos, you have a parking lot. They have that, what is it? The Garfield parking lot right behind that, that shopping area? It's a, they have parking right there, a big old parking lot. So they are perfectly positioned to, to weather a reconstruction.
Well, maybe someone should connect with them and see, you know, cause I know that in the news, what the, the reasons that they gave were the construction. Maybe someone should check in with them to see if there are underlying causes as well.
Yeah, this is why I don't take business owners seriously. Sorry, sorry, business owners.
I take them seriously.
Right, you're running for office, you have to take them seriously. They don't, they don't pay my bills, so. F you, business owners. If anybody wants to, if any business owners want to sponsor the Wedge Life podcast and prove that they are committed to a more livable city and they are not gonna let parking concerns get in the way, contact me at newsroom@wedglive.com.
Can I just say, in another area of the ward, in good news for you, um, and good news for me, like I, I love this. So on Penn Avenue in Bryn Mawr, uh, that's a county road, but they're gonna be installing a bike lane on that. They're gonna be doing construction up there. And um, there's an active transit committee in Bryn Mawr as part of the Bryn Mawr Neighborhood Association. They're super excited about it. And one of the members of that has actually um, is a business owner on that street and has talked with the other business owners in Bryn Mawr. And so they will be having parking on one side of the street only.
Yeah, congratulations Bryn Mawr. Looks like you're, you're making progress there.
I, I have other ideas about parking, but I don't know like how it's how to bring more parking into uptown. I feel like I don't know if I want to go there with you.
That's fine. How would you bring more parking into uptown?
Well, okay, I have an idea that I think the Y building that has a huge parking lot.
That's existing parking. Of course we should use existing parking.
And I think that we should break that off and have that be a municipal parking lot. So the city buys it.
Right. You know what would happen? No one would use it because there is not a parking shortage in uptown. That's my, uh, do you think people would use it?
I do, especially if like there's going to be the uh, Unidos Center there, the Rise Up Center. Like folks can drive into that and use those lots. But also um, for the Uptown Theater, that venue, that'll be really great parking just a block away. Um, Bobby Bead, like the huge influx of folks that go to Bobby Bead right across the street.
Hmm. I mean, uptown has multiple parking garages and people act as if they're not there when they complain about parking. That's why I'm a little skeptical that that is necessary. I'm not opposed. It's a fine idea if people want it. Another thing, like I, I've lived through so many fights about streets where people have predicted apocalypse.
Yeah.
And it turned out fine and we like it. And you'd probably have a lot more opposition if you tried to undo it, then you would have support for it. So that's, I'm coming at this from a place of, I'm an old, old man who's seen, seen too much of the world. And I'm just deeply skeptical of all of my enemies. That's where I'm coming from on this.
Um, I, I think that, you know, for some of the parking issue, I will say that like, you know, so I have a cousin who's super into transit and he did an internship with Metro Transit over the summer. And I've talked to him quite a bit about transit issues in the city, about Nicollet Mall, et cetera. So there's, there's another fun transit topic we can go to.
We're not going there. We're not going there.
But um, I, you know, he has said that he's like, I, I don't think parking is the only reason for the decline of um, uptown in the current state, and I think that's accurate. I, you know, for me, it does seem like a contributing factor. Um, I'm happy to look at parking studies and, and see that. I, I will say that like I have talked with folks in and around twenty sixth and Hennepin. And now there's um residential or there's metered parking on residential side streets. And this is much more on the Ward ten side of Hennepin than the Ward seven side, but still impacts residents in Ward seven. Um, on the building twenty six, I think it's twenty six forty one Hennepin. Now there's parking pretty much metered parking all around them in, for like at least a block or two in all directions. And those folks have, in that building, I've talked with them and they have said like, some of us are gonna move. This is just really frustrating for us.
We spent a long time on transportation.
I know, I know. I was like, at one point I was like, is this gonna be interesting for folks who aren't us?
I think so. This is gonna be the most entertaining episode of all the candidate episodes, I feel like. Because a lot of candidates are super boring. And so at least, at least we're having a freewheeling conversation here.
Well, I'm trying, you know?
I see you mentioned pad split on your website as a, as a housing uh solution where basically you rent a room to someone. I don't know what to compare it to. It's.
Have you heard of pad split?
I have heard about it from you, but it, I want to compare it to Airbnb, but I, maybe that's not a perfect comparison. Like, how would you, how would you do this? Is there an owner occupancy requirement for this app? Like how, how do you avoid the Airbnb style? I'm gonna buy up a bunch of houses. I'm gonna rent rooms in those houses kind of thing.
Yeah, well, I think it's more, it's in, like, as I hear it, it's an SRO model, so single room occupancy. Um, and the reason why I'm excited about it for affordable housing is because it, it can provide deeply affordable housing for folks. Um, and single room occupancies are legal in Minneapolis. And so we can have that here. We've got the zoning for it. And one of the things that, yeah, pad split is interesting because it allows like on a weekly rental, right? So I really like that because it provides housing for folks who are in a transitional state in their lives. Um, or folks who, you know, have some instability in their lives and so don't need to pay for a full month. Um, and so that's what I'm seeing it for. I, I do hear that it can be kind of similar to an Airbnb space. Um, you know, we would, I like the regulation here that we have in Minneapolis of like only one Airbnb space uh, per, per user, per owner. So we could do something like that. Um, but, but I like it for affordable housing.
So.
Why I like it for affordable housing, if I can just name, is that like, I'm trying to think, so like interest rates are high. The price of lumber is really high right now. So how can we make affordable housing from our existing housing stock? Is one thing that I'm thinking about. And so in addition to pad split, we can have, um, we can create tax incentives for folks to turn single family homes into duplexes or triplexes. That's something else that I like. Um, and then also I think I mentioned on the website, like cutting red tape so that it can be more affordable for developers to build affordable housing here.
The thing about Minneapolis SRO, SRO, single room occupancy regulations is I believe they are limited to like nonprofits and like government entities running these. So it's, it's fairly restrictive. Like as an entrepreneur, you can't just come out and say like, I'm, I'm opening an SRO here. So I think there would be some like, some regulations that would need to be smoothed out. And I don't sense there's a lot of appetite uh, at City Hall among like staff and of going further. Like they are afraid of, like, is this gonna cause problems in the neighborhood backlash, like livability concerns?
Well, what are your thoughts on that?
I thought, I thought they should have gone further. I don't think they should have limited it to nonprofits and, and government entities. I think they should have gone further.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear the concerns. Um, and so some of, you know, I think it's worth a study to see or maybe worth a pilot program to see if we, if that, if those livability concerns are borne out. Um, but we need housing and we need to be able to think about that in all different ways for folks.
So you mentioned code reform at the state level to uh, the, so current codes are preventing conversion of duplexes and triplex. You mentioned the state level reforms you want to see. What about uh reforms at the city level? Because there are some setbacks and floor area ratio restrictions that are making it difficult to, to build those kinds of homes too.
Can you, okay, this is, I know about the floor area ratio. Um, we have had an instance of that in Ward seven uh, that I think actually was just discussed on council today. Um, but for the setbacks, can you explain a little bit? Like, so it's basically, yeah, what are, what are the setbacks now from the sidewalk, for example?
So I won't be able to do it in any great detail because it's gonna vary from property to property. And I'm just like, not that up on the zoning code, but this is like a very broad example. Like if your lot is a certain size and the setback requirements are too much, you simply, and then you've got height requirements, like you cannot fit three units, for example, onto that lot. If you've also gotta leave the space on the sides and the front, you can't go too high. So it's, all these constraints are forcing the building to be so small.
That you can have a triplex in there, for example.
Right, even though triplexes are legal, it's just not feasible to build it in there.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I think like my, so my street is gonna be, like I'm one street off Hennepin. And so that's upzoned pretty significantly in the twenty forty plan. Um, and my side of the street is upzoned much more than the, the other side of the street. And so I would just say like for those setback regulations, like why not start in those areas that have proximity to commercial corridors? Um, and see how that goes. So I would, that's something that I would be fine with. Again, like maybe not in every, I mean, starting in certain places, right? And then moving out from there.
So if you're elected, you will get a vote on the next comprehensive plan.
I know.
We just finished the, our long, arduous legal battle against the twenty forty plan.
I know. I feel like everyone, do you have a twenty forty hangover? Like.
Oh, I'm, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get into the next one.
You're, okay, you're like twenty fifteen.
I think it's hilarious that our legal battle lasted this long and now we're electing council members that will vote on the next one. I love it. And I love that they lost. I love that the worst people in the city uh did a lawsuit. They wasted a lot of money and they lost.
People.
Oh, who's worse? Who could be worse than uh, what are they called? Uh, Minneapolis for Everyone? Is that what they were called? No, uh, Smart Growth Minneapolis? Minneapolis for Everyone? Is that what they were called? No, uh, Smart Growth Minneapolis? Uh, stealing a name from an environmental group?
Okay, I, so I will say like for the twenty forty plan, like I, like, I like the triplex idea everywhere. Um, some of like the, the serious upzonings um, in the twenty forty plan. Like where there are sing, where it's currently zoned or where it was zoned for single family, um, being upzoned to like six stories. Um, I know that that gives residents pause and like I hear that. Uh, and I think another concern that I have about the twenty forty plan, again, broadly, super cool with it. Um, but another concern about the twenty forty plan is like commercial zoning. Um, I wanna see a little bit more definition around what can go where, I would say. Um, and so those are some things that I would like to see in the twenty fifty plan. Um, but
Do we have too much commercial zoning or not enough?
So I am thinking of the recuperative care centers. And again, this might be a spot where we disagree. So the one on Lake Street and the one on Nicollet. Um, and I think that those would be better zoned in like light industrial spaces. The model for this, um, I remember looking at it quite a bit. The model for this was out of Las Vegas. And um, which by the way, was a city-run venture, not for profit. Um, and so what I would like to see there is more like a light industrial kind of like Avivo Village in North Loop is like current, I believe it's light industrial.
So in the late twenty teens, there was a move to make it so that shelters for homeless people were not restricted to very specific and few parts of the city. That is why those are allowed now. And I think the reason they're popping up more now is some Medicaid things where services like that are eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. So people are coming in like, well, now that these, these, we can make money on this through Medicaid, now we're gonna put these things in. I just feel like it'd be a step backward to start restricting shelters to light industrial areas. When we went, when we had this debate in the twenty teens, we were like, no, we need to fix this. We need to stop restricting this. Because, you know, people need, need a roof over their head.
Yeah, um, I mean, so to be clear, like I think the services of recuperative care are needed. Um, I think that, you know, if you're experiencing unsheltered homelessness and you have to go to the hospital for whatever reason. Like it's so obvious that you're gonna be able to heal better uh, when you are experiencing shelter than when you're not. Um, and you know, some of that can come down to a values statement. And if you wanna be just like purely pragmatic about it, right? Like the cost of each person experiencing unsheltered homelessness per year is something like thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, for, you know, the, the state, the county, et cetera, that the federal level that we pay for in our taxes. Um, so I think that those services are needed. Um, I think that it's important to consider like where they go. Um, the one on Lake Street, for example. So for me, the one on Lake Street where an area, like because these things do have impacts when they come into a, a business corridor or when they come into an area, that is the reality. Um, and so we wanna like be able to say, like, can that area survive that? Um, can that area like continue to thrive with that in there? Um, and for Lake Street, you know, knowing that that corridor has experienced so much in terms of vacancies, et cetera. And now I know that there were some businesses that have said that they are going to leave as a result of that shelter coming in there or that recuperative care center coming in there. And for the one on Nicollet, um, I was, so for, for Lake Street, it was the commercial corridor in decline. That was my concern. And the one on Nicollet, my concern was that that is a very high crime area. And so um, bringing in a recuperative care center, I feel like is not the best spot for folks to be able to heal. Um, and also, you know, again, needing to focus on the community and can the community and the surrounding area absorb that? But um, those services are needed. I, I want to have them in Minneapolis. We just need to figure out where we can do it smartly. That's what I would say.
There's a lot of issues where people just don't want it in their neighborhood, put it somewhere else. And like, you play out the politics of that and you end up with, with a situation where nobody wants it near them. And uh, you can't have it anywhere.
That is accurate. I mean, you know, like, I mean, one thing I think that we as a city have done really well at is we have um, had a, a fair, we, we we shelter a large amount of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Like more than St. Paul, more than the suburbs, more than the rest of the state, right? And so I think as a city, we, and we want to continue to be fairly generous while also maybe like nudging these other municipalities to continue to do that as well.
How do you feel about the city's approach to encampments? What, what do you think the solution is there?
So, I mean, this is, it's a, you know, like everything, it's a complicated issue and I wanna like, you know, we need to be multifaceted about it. Um, one thing that I think that is not getting enough attention is um mandated treatment. And so I just wanna talk about that and what that would look like a little bit. Um, in Los Angeles, there's uh, I don't know what, what the figures are for Minneapolis, cause I haven't seen a study, but in Los Angeles, it's about two thirds of the folks experiencing chronic homelessness. So the folks on this street um, are either suffering from severe mental health issues such as schizophrenia or substance use disorder. Um, and that's a big number. And so when I look at that, like I work in mental health. Um, I work with folks with eating disorders, but we see a, a lot of co-occurring mental health and social issues as well. Um, like housing insecurity, substance use disorder. Um, and I think that we need to I, I don't think it's kind to let folks experience those things without using all the tools that we can as a society to be able to help them. Because I, I have seen it with my own eyes. People are not in a state where they can make life-giving choices for themselves. When we think about this, we need to do it really humanely. Um, we need to do it with care. But we're not the same society that we were in the nineteen seventies, um, when we had institutionalization that was really unfair and unethical. Um, so that is one component, I think of it. It's not gonna be for everyone, but I think that that needs to be on the table. That's not a city, right? The city can't do that. But the city can step up, work with our county and our state partners and, and advocate for that. So that's one piece that I think uh, is important. And I also, I'm, I'm imagining hearing pushback from your listeners. So I wanna also say that um, civil commitment or, you know, mandated treatment isn't necessarily guaranteed to work. And sometimes it takes multiple times. It is really hard to kick a fentanyl addiction, addiction. Um, but doing nothing is definitely guaranteed not to work. So.
So I saw, I think it was maybe PBS that covered this, the NewsHour, could have been someplace else about, I think maybe it was Washington State. Did they ha, did they have that in Washington State? Maybe, maybe still have it or you're not familiar.
We have it everywhere.
Like involuntary, like
There has been, yeah, there has been um, some discussion of it in Washington. Yeah.
So it was, it was mixed, the outcome of that uh, was mixed. And I think the, the person that they featured ended up uh, it ended up not being effective and he, he died anyway. So like, cause there's an argument that like people have to be ready for it and open to it and like seek it out for it to work.
Yeah, and um, I would say, so when I think about, like it is, a lot of it is habits, right? And adjusting your body to new things. And so sometimes like the first, like I, I remember reading an article that talked about this like a, you know, scientific article and it said that civil commitment doesn't work because it only works in twenty percent of cases or something, right? Uh, and for me, working where I work, I think like twenty percent the first time around, like that's good. You know, um, so we need to be prepared to continue to do it um, so that folks can like literally get their bodies used to a different pattern, for example. Um, and I will say that, you know, it's, it's not for everyone. That's, that's true. But again, if we do nothing, then we will not have different outcomes.
Is there a council member where you, you think, wow, I really like the way they do things?
Um, I will miss Andrea Jenkins for sure. Um, I have appreciated her thoughtful questions. Um, appreciate her openness. Um, I will say, you know, in talking with council members, like I, I have reached out to several council members. Um, not all of them have responded. Linay Palmasano has been incredibly gracious with her time. Um, I appreciate that. Those are the two I've had the most connections with.
You know, Paula, I think we're at the end here. I thought this was gonna take three hours. I thought we were gonna spend three hours talking about uh, transportation. Which I think people would have enjoyed if we had done that.
We can continue this. It was, it was a really nice day and I was very tempted to say like, can we take this on a walk? But yeah.
That's more work for me. Like I gotta like get a video camera on a stick. I gotta wire us up with mics. It wouldn't, we would not have had this much fun on a walk.
Well, I just wanna say thanks for, for talking with me. I know that we don't agree on everything, but um, I still really value your opinion and you obviously are really informed and I, you know, um, just wanna continue to listen to ev, all voices in the city.
Do you have any recommendations for us?
I knew you were gonna ask this question and I honestly, like, so my life for the last three months or so has been campaigning. Um, so, you know, if you wanna do that, you certainly can, but uh,
Too many people. I'm starting a new PAC. I've announced this. It's called Don't Run For Something because Ward five is a mess. You've got a firefighter running in Ward nine who like plagiarized his website.
I like the don't run for something. I think you can maybe like get, get somewhere with that.
Yeah, we're providing strategic support and mentorship for candidates who should not be running and we're gonna encourage them to stop.
Okay, um, I will say that in the summer, one of my favorite Ward seven activities to do is the free yoga at uh, East Cedar Lake Beach, AKA Hidden Beach. It's really amazing and they have all levels. Um, different, there's gonna be a lot of different programming this summer. So that's one thing that I'm looking forward to. Maybe I'll have like office hours there and people can come do yoga with me.
Okay, and Paula, if this doesn't work out, we can do like a Crossfire series. If anyone remembers the old CNN panel shows where people would shout at each other, we can, we can do a transportation themed uh,
Oh man.
Cable news style shout fest where
The listeners can't see it, but I'm blushing. So yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it. I mean, that said, like I, I live where I live because I like transit and I like bikes, right? So
Well, you got voters to pander to, right?
It's not, like, it is the, just the consideration of the whole, which I think is important.
Okay, we're, we're not getting sucked back into it. Paula Chesley, uh, candidate for city council in Ward seven here in Minneapolis. Caucuses are happening April eighth. Go to Minneapolis, minneapolisdfl.org, I believe is the website where you can find more information.
Do other, do other candidates say their websites? Do I get to do that?
I will, I will allow you to do that, yeah.
Okay, um, it is Paula for Ward seven and that's the number seven dot org. You can find, and you can also message me about transit questions. I don't know if this is gonna bring up a lot of hate mail, but I'm here for it. I'll respond.
I don't think the people who care about transportation are mean people. They will send you very constructive, long uh, five-page emails about all the ways, all the detailed ways.
I mean, maybe not before the caucuses, but I'm happy to, you know, I'm, I'm always happy to meet with folks.
And uh, I, I hope to be speaking with Katie Cashman uh, and potentially Elizabeth Schaefer too. But I, I don't know if I have much hope about Elizabeth Schaefer coming on, but she is invited whenever. Look, look how much fun Paula and I had, Elizabeth Schaefer. Just come on. Okay. I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.